Good evening. This regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission is now in session. It's Thursday, January the 4th, 2024, 6:00 PM, and we're conducting this meeting in the Carabelle City Hall chambers. We'll open with a prayer by Commissioner Melander, and then we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're here tonight again, and I would like to thank you for bringing us through the year of 2023. I know we crossed hurdles. We all did, personal and professionally, and you brought us through another year, and we're here again tonight, entering year 2024, and we ask for your guidance as we travel the roads of 2024. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening and welcome, and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for silencing your phones. And if you want to speak during public comment or speak during one of the agenda items under discussion, you'll need to complete a speaker card and turn that in to Ms. Keisha. And first thing on our agenda is our consent agenda, which has the December 7th, 2023, regular meeting minutes, and the December 14th budget hearing and special meeting minutes, and then the attorney's invoices for November. Did everyone have an opportunity to read over those items? And we'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Keisha, that motion for the consent agenda to approve is by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Our next item, then, is public comment, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak on any item that is not on this agenda tonight. So do we have anyone that has some other topic they'd like to speak about for three minutes? Come on up to the podium. We'd love to hear from you. All right, then. We'll move on to the commissioner reports, and Commissioner Walden isn't with us tonight, unfortunately. He's ill. Commissioner Brown?
I just want to say Happy New Year, and tomorrow is First Friday downtown, so we'll be in the streets with music, art, and all kinds of fun until 8:00 PM.
All right, very good. Commissioner Melander?
The only thing, it's good to see everyone here tonight, as been stated and I said in the prayers, 2024, we're opening up a new year. Good to see you, and I hope you participate and come visit with us at every meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Gray?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. All right, I do have a little something, and once again, I'll say Happy New Year to all of you. The last two weeks of December were relaxing for Greg and I. We actually had an opportunity to visit with family, which is something that we don't get to do very often. But on December the 28th, I met with a gentleman named Patrick Secleu from Banasac, France. And Mr. Secleu is married to a local girl, now woman, who was actually born and raised here. When he was younger, he was a university professor in the Orlando area for 20 years. He and his wife now reside in Banasac, his hometown. But while visiting here over Christmas, he requested to meet with me to present his vision of developing a sister city relationship between Carabelle and Banasac, France. He explained that sister cities promote a network for activities such as friendship, culture, tourism, and exchange visits for students and adults. He noted that Banasac and Carabelle have similar industries, including fishing, construction, and locally owned businesses. He explained that sister cities are established through an agreement, but many times they can begin as a friendship city or as friendship cities without an official agreement. Each sister city is formally established and managed through a nonprofit organization with a volunteer committee. So if we decided to do this, you know, we would have to somehow get a volunteer committee organized, and they would develop a nonprofit, because the nonprofit sister cities are eligible to seek grant funding for programs and exchange visits. So Mr. Secleu said that this process would take a couple of years, but the process has to begin with both city councils on each side giving a potential yes to begin to develop the official agreement. And Florida, the Department of Florida actually has, the state of Florida, has a department regarding sister cities and the development of, through their, under their Culture and Arts Department. So with all of that said, he has requested an agenda item for the February 1st commission, so I'm reporting this now to give the commissioners a head up. They can Google it and read up on it and see what it's all about. And he'll call in from France. He's already got Courtney and Keisha's contact information, and he'll explain the program in detail, and he'll be sending some photos or some kind of a PowerPoint presentation for the staff to put up on the widescreen. So we'll be hearing from him at that time. And that's all for me. I wish everyone a healthy and prosperous 2024, and I'll toss it over to the city attorney for his report.
All right, and Happy New Year, everyone, and I have, I don't have one.
Okay, very good. All right, well, how about our city administrator?
All right. I sent out department reports, but not the water and sewer department. I didn't get that one on time. It was a short week, and they were a little busy this week, so. But you did get the streets and roads and the police department, and do you guys have any questions? All right. On the old water plant renovations, all the windows and doors have been installed, except for two on the backside, and he's still waiting for those. They had to be replaced. They came broken, so he's got some new ones ordered. The installation of the elevator at the Justice Building is complete, so it's all done. Ms. Tamara may have more to report under hers, but it's installed. They've done some training classes, so it's all good to go. The Duke Energy EV charging stations at the fire station have been installed. They still have to put a transformer on the pole, so they don't have power hooked to them yet, but they should be doing that sometime this month. They said by the end of January, they'd be operational.
Okay. Did you have something else?
I had one more.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask about the Duke Energy charging station, because there was, I think, a little bit of misunderstanding that the city paid for that.
The city did not pay any money for that. That was a grant offered through Duke Energy. They paid for it 100%. Also, the city is not getting any revenues off of that. We're not collecting rent, or we don't have a lease with Duke. What they needed, the qualifications, was that it was in our downtown area. That meant it had to be within walking distance of our downtown businesses. So essentially, people come here, they download these apps on their phone that tells them where the next charging station is, so as they're driving through, they can stop and charge their vehicles. They can have lunch and shop while they're waiting on the vehicles to charge. And then I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but there is an agreement, and I believe it's a five-year term, that after five years, there's some options on whether they remove them or lease options, or I don't have it in front of me, but there are some options over a period of years on what happens.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Do any of the commissioners have comments or questions regarding that Duke Energy charging station? I know that we've been talking about it in public meetings. It's been on the agenda.
For years.
Yes, for several years, maybe three years, this agenda and the CRA agenda, because it affected both committees.
That is correct.
Okay.
So hopefully, it will help our economic downtown.
Right, yeah.
Then last, but the water and sewer software will be changing out the new software on the 29th. So none of the computers will be able to be accessed in the water and sewer billing software. So they'll still be able to take payments, as long as you know the amount that needs to be paid. They'll take your payment, write you a written receipt. If someone comes in to turn on or turn off their service, that can be done, but it will be very limited that week on what, you know, if someone calls and wants to know how much the water bill is, or why did I have this high usage, they're not going to be able to pull that up and look at it. So that's for the public. So if you call and you don't get an answer, don't get aggravated.
Would you mind making a Facebook post about that, so it's easier for us to share and get the word out?
Yes, we will have a post.
Okay, thank you.
I have asked them to develop a flyer. The software company may have a flyer that we can use to
Explain.
Explain all of the new options that can be done and different ways to pay and that type of thing. So. And you said that is
The 29th, it's supposed to be the 29th through the 1st.
Okay.
Which would be Monday through Thursday, but we're saying the 2nd, because we don't, you know, know how it's going to go. They'll come in that morning, that Monday morning, and print the bills, and then after that, they'll start transferring the data from one company to the other.
Okay, all right. And we did even talk about doing a PSA, something short through Oyster Radio even to help
Maybe the newspaper even?
Yeah.
Just as much as we can, because
Well, this new software has a lot more options, where you can opt-in for text message alerts and check your bills online and lots of other options that we don't currently have.
That's great.
Okay. Do y'all have questions for Ms. Courtney? Anything else? All right. Ms. Keisha, our city clerk?
Got some dates for everybody. January 15th, City Hall will be closed for Martin Luther King Day. January 16th, we've got a regular CRA meeting at 1:30, and then also at 5:00, we'll have the workshop regarding the Old City Hall building. January 18th, we have a tentative P and Z. I don't have anything for it right now, but it's still open. Next commission meeting is February 1st, 2024, and I have not reached out to the ARPC yet as far as the zoning.
I do have a question for you.
Okay.
I know I asked you earlier in the week about our first reading for the new alcohol ordinance.
That will be on the February 1st, February.
So we couldn't do it before then?
If y'all decide to have a meeting, we can put it on there, but it needs to be, I need to know, it's going to be, I need to know two weeks in advance to be able to get the ad in. Even Tallahassee Democrat, I used to could get an ad in within a day, and now they're a week out, just like the other, the times, so.
Could we add it to the Old City Hall meeting? It's
That's the workshop.
That's the workshop.
Oh. Okay.
And then on your ordinance, you have to have the date, right, of the first hearing?
I have to have the date of the meeting, and I have to advertise it within 10 days of the meeting, and then I have to have another week to get it in the paper before it runs. So by the time we get it all scheduled, it would probably be around the last week of the month anyway.
Gotcha, okay.
And it's February the 1st is the next meeting, so it's not like
So I got to thinking about that after I talked to you. I was like, well, by the time we get it scheduled, a week out, and get everybody, and then, like I said, a week to get in the paper, and then a week, 10 days before the meeting, it has to be ran, so.
Okay, thank you.
And so we'll have about, we'll have three ordinances next, next month.
Three ordinance, first reading for next month. We'll have the Sunset Isle, the alcohol ordinance, and then the abatement of the cemetery roads.
Gotcha, okay.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Keisha. And then we'll move on to Anovia's report with Mr. Russell Large.
Okay, thank you. The week of December 20th, we had a meeting with the mayor and Courtney and the local programs administrator, Maria So Walter, to discuss the Baywood funding application for those improvements. And you will see on the agenda tonight is a resolution for the city to provide matching funds, and Ms. So Walter explained that that was an important step in elevating the status of that funding application. For the Lighthouse project, the new grinder pumps were scheduled to be delivered today. They were not delivered today, and so I'll be calling the manufacturer in the morning to find out where those are. But I'm expecting those to arrive any day now. Also, the grant agreement for the Water Management District was extended to June 24th. So all those extension dates are synchronized at this point, and that's plenty of time for the contractor to finish this project. On Marine Street, you see the boardwalk is complete and the seawall repairs underway. On the new Carabelle Cemetery, Thurman was authorized to proceed with the monumentation, and he's preparing the survey for abandonment of Third Street as well. For Ryan Drive, we have those permits submitted. For Avenue C, I spoke with the Water Management District staff today, and there was an additional fee that they requested, but Carabelle qualifies for the reduction based on their status as an economic opportunity county. So we'll coordinate with them, and I would expect that permit to be issued real soon. For the golf cart crossings, we continue to discuss and ask for some form of approval or comment or something from the department. So we're continuing to push that as best we can. For the Lenard West sewer improvements, Fred Fox is still working on the environmental review, and we are beginning work for that, for that sewer rehab project. And then finally, on the water supply well number five, we were hoping to get that submitted in December, but we will get that submitted in the month of January. All right, and that completes my report for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell? Okay, and yes, sir?
If I may, just
If I may, just one item that occurred to me on the attorney report. I did get a call from the county attorney regarding the Lanark EMS additional property. And they, we talked briefly, and they have ordered a survey so that we can get a proper legal description of the property that they would like transferred. I'll present that to y'all when I get it from the county.
Okay. Does anyone have questions regarding that comment from the attorney? Okay. And then does anyone have questions to Mr. Larch regarding his report?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. And thank you, Russell. We appreciate it. And we'll look forward to hearing you on the next couple of items here as well. All right. Our advisory board reports, Mr. Sullivan is in here with us tonight, but he did submit his report and telling about the stormwater drainage clearing project that's going on out there right now, and they had a little grass fire. I was interested in reading that. I was surprised to hear about that. And then I knew about our light outage out there. So do y'all have comments, or did you have anything you needed additional to report, Mr. Sullivan?
No, I don't.
Okay. And comments or questions regarding this report? All right. And all of these reports are written, and they're available through public records request if anyone wants to see this information. Okay, and then next, we have the, excuse me, we have the Carabelle Waterfront Partnership. Did you have anything, Ms. Tamara?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell you that yesterday, we did training. We were lucky enough to, the state elevator instructor, state elevator inspector came down last week and had to see the last part of the elevator put together. And we have had Ken Seagert, who works in the building next door to the Justice Building, had agreed to become our official elevator operator, trained by the state and by the elevator company. So Ken took that training, which essentially meant standing there for two hours and listen to the guy talk. But we got it done. It's written down that it was finished. He was very kind to take that on. Now, we have to write up procedures for all the staff that will be operating the elevator. And we're not supposed to call it an elevator. We're supposed to call it a wheelchair lift.
Okay.
But the certificate he gave us says elevator right on it, so I don't know. That's the state for you. And, but we are training staff, and yesterday, I got to be the, I got to pretend to be the visitor while somebody else was taking me upstairs, and it works beautifully. And it's just, it's a long time coming, but it's really something to be proud of. And it looks remarkably good. I just know we got to keep it safe. That's, my big concern is to keeping the hoodlum kids out of it. And so we're taking steps to try to make that hard for them to get in. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that we always do talks. The History Museum has talks during January, February, March. And the title of our talk this month is Dog Island is Moving. So you'll have to come down to Sea Quarters and come to our talk at 10 o'clock and on the 20th of the month, and Saturday morning to find out where it's going.
Okay. Is it coming over here to see us in Carabelle?
I'm not telling ahead of time.
Okay.
It's, we've been getting a lot of traffic to the museums during the holidays, and people are.
Yes, I wanted you to tell about this.
Very, yes, we, I happened to, today was the day we did our annual report for all the visitors to the museum and the inn throughout the year, and also the number of volunteer hours. And those are all going in remarkably, in remarkable increases. I mean, they're not shooting up there, but they are making a lot of progress. And we've got a four-year trend for visitors and volunteer hours that are going pretty straight up. So the reason the volunteer hours are so important, we can match a grant with that. That's, each hour is got to monet, I can monetize every hour somebody works there and actually have it get us money. So we like that. But it looks remarkable. It just keeps, we're recovered from COVID completely at this point, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Tamara.
Okay. And then our next advisory board would be the Carabelle, excuse me, the Crooked River Lighthouse Association.
Hello, I'm Steve Allen, president of the Crooked River Lighthouse Association. It's been a quiet month. We had an event for the full moon on the day after Christmas. And I just want to let you know about the two events coming up this month, or in the next 30 days. We'll have the January 25th full moon event. We'll have Get Your 80s Outfits Out. I know the mayor probably has some good 80s outfits and come out and dance, and we'll have, well.
What are you saying, I'm old?
Let me, hold on. Hello, my name is Stephen Allen.
I outgrew them.
Well, anyway, come on out and dance and have some fun. We'll have a DJ out there and our usual fun for the full moon. And then our big event, a year ago in February, we opened the Crooked River, the Lens exhibit. And remember, the Florida Lighthouse Association came, and we had the big ribbon signing and an extended country market, and Tom Mason and the Blue Buccaneers. So that is now funded by the TDC. And so this year's Crooked River Park Fest is February the 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the evening. From 9:00 to 5:00, we have an extended country market. Last year, you remember, there were 40 vendors up on the park. We hope to exceed possibly that this year with food and the tower open and everything. And then from 6:00 to 9:00, we'll have our fundraising concert. We have the Funky Taters coming from Tallahassee. It's a big 10-piece brass, New Orleans-style coast band. I mean, they're fantastic. They've been playing over in Tallahassee. And so we'll have climbs and the room open and everything. We're very excited, so we're planning for that. And we're back to work on the boat again. We took a little break from working on the boat, so back at it. Thank you.
All right. Do we have comments or questions for Steve? Okay, thank you, Steve Allen. All right then, that's that. And next, we'll move on to our public hearing. And this is Resolution 01, our first resolution of the year, 01-2024. And I'll ask Mr. Hartman to read that, and then I would like to, we want to have some discussion after he reads this to us.
All right. And so this is City of Carabelle Resolution Number 01-2024. And it's a resolution of the City of Carabelle authorizing the submission of an application for the municipal small county outreach program, MScop, to the Florida Department of Transportation. Whereas the City of Carabelle owns and maintains streets and associated right of ways within its jurisdiction, and whereas the City of Carabelle is designated as a rural area of opportunity under Section 288.06567A, Florida statute, as a small disadvantaged community, adequately addressing significant existing unimproved and deteriorated street conditions places a financial hardship on the city and its citizens. And whereas this funding shortfall creates a negative impact on both public and private development and creates a potential threat to public safety and threatens to negatively affect the economic sustainability of the City of Carabelle, whereas the City of Carabelle agrees to the commitment of funds of $100,000 for Baywood Estates project, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Carabelle. Number one, that the City of Carabelle endorses as a high priority infrastructure projects improvements and improvements to Baywood Drive. Number two, the City of Carabelle hereby authorizes submission of an FDOT municipal small county outreach program, MScop, project application for funding and is grateful for the opportunity. Number three, that the City of Carabelle will submit application to the Florida Department of Transportation for funding of the Baywood Estates and commit $100,000 of funds from the City of Carabelle for this project. Number four, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute all documents required in connection with the preparation and submission of said applications. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be attached to the grant application by the City of Carabelle.
Okay, thank you. And the thing is that the item here that we would want to discuss is the $100,000, which we had a brief discussion at our last meeting when Russell said we were going to have a meeting, and I asked, could we offer some money? We're a disadvantaged community, and we don't, we're not required to have matching funds on this. But she, Ms. Showalter, indicated that this district DO3, excuse me, FDOT District 3, gets a very little amount of money for the size of the district. And she said that this would help, like you said, elevate the status of the application, that it would be of a great help that we would offer funding, match funding. Courtney and I agreed to offer this amount because we have, we have a little bit more than that in the log account. It doesn't obligate every penny of the log account. So we need to have some discussion.
Well, as we've discussed before, and I think I voiced it last one, the $100,000, I think, is going to be a significant amount to leverage with the grant request. And before we finish our discussion and any action we take, I'd like for Russell to kind of explain to the public that the application request, if approved, could be approved as a whole, could be approved in phases, et cetera. Because, for example, if the public feels like that we're going to leverage the $100,000 of the taxpayers' money to the project or to the grant request, and we get approved for only half of the project and not the entire project, the public needs to understand that, that we've already leveraged $100,000 to half of the project if that's the way it comes in.
I understand.
But as far as the amount and where it comes from, I've thought about it and talked about it with Courtney, and I think that $100,000 is a significant amount, because we're a small city. We don't have a lot of money. And we're lucky that we have that of the taxpayers' money to be able to put toward this grant. Because I've been on the board now since 2017, and we've applied and applied and applied, and we've gotten turned down. But we haven't leveraged money with it prior to or now. And if we leverage $100,000 to it, there's a good chance of us being able to get the project grant. And if we do it out of the log account, in my opinion, unless there's other ideas, there's some other monies that gives, we have more flexibility with some of the other monies. And if we commit that $100,000 out of the log account, which is exactly what it's for, is road improvements. So anyway, I'm in favor of that, Mayor, and thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. And I will echo on that. I've been on this board since 2011. And we have applied and applied. We have done everything. I mean, in 2011, that road needed repaired. I, you know, I don't understand why we haven't, we've gotten some grant, but we leverage money. A lot of our grants that we've got recently with the FDOT are in the CRA district. We've only, this would be only our third grant since I've been on board with the FDOT. And we leverage money with that. And so, you know, this is like the last straw. It's like, I don't know what else, how else to try to get funding. And the entire project is, do you have an estimate on the entire roadway?
Yes, the estimate was just over a million, I think 1.2 million, maybe 1.3 million, somewhere in that neighborhood.
For the entire roadway?
For the entire project.
Which I think that the $100,000 is like, that would be good for the 1.2. But as Commissioner Melander says, they may decide that they're going to do the one or two.
Right.
So I don't know.
And when, and I'm sorry, when we met with Ms. Showalter, she indicated that we just submit the Phase 1 project.
Phase 1, and?
That was her recommendation during our call with her.
Okay, and is that the corner, the main, the corner up at the top there?
Yes, that's where the cross drain is. That's where the road over tops. That's the primary issue for access into the neighborhood. So that portion of the roadway would be elevated some, a new cross drain installed. That would be a significant improvement.
Ms. Brown, go first.
Just for the public, because I was also asked this, when we say roadway, we're also talking about stormwater and the whole?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Melander.
She covered it right there. I was just wanting the public to hear that.
Yeah.
It's about 500. So it's a significant portion of the project.
Do we want to put, commit $100,000 if we're only going to put in for Phase 1? Because that would be a real significant amount for 500,000.
Is there any match required at all now? I have the understanding there's no match.
There is no match required.
No match required. And on some of them, they require, well, that might be a CDBG 25,000, so.
I think that's true, yep, yep.
Mayor, at one time in our past discussions about this grant, Russell worked with me here and talked. Seems like we discussed breaking it into a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. And the last discussion, I remember, we were going to apply for the full project, but break it into two separate pieces. Because if they were not able to fund the full project, then maybe they would fund at least half of it.
That's correct. That is correct, and.
What I'm asking, when you said that, that she recommended that we only apply for half of it? Is that what I understood you?
Well, the first phase is the significant portion of the project, for sure. But we actually broke it into three phases. And that was one of the suggestions that we received from them at the last couple of cycles that we applied for this project, that we break it into those phases. And the point of that is, was to bring that dollar amount down. So the mayor is correct. I think they have, I think something like 3, 3, a little over, maybe 3.5 million for that whole program.
For the whole district.
So, you know, if we go in and ask for a million and a half, that's, you know, that's, they want to spread the money out as much as they can to, you know, all the communities. So that's why it was broken up into phases. Did I answer your question?
It did, but I posed another question to follow up on what the city administrator has points she's making. Because I was thinking we were going to apply for, we were going to leverage the $100,000 and apply for the entire project. And if we didn't get the entire project, at least maybe we'd get a part of it, okay? But if we're going to only apply for what you say Phase 1, maybe we should lower our leverage to, just using a number now, Mayor, 50,000 to leave us 50,000 toward the next request. And is that something worth discussing here?
I think so. And in our discussions with Ms. Showalter, I don't know that, I don't know that we committed to a number, per se.
We did not. I wouldn't have committed without, yeah.
Right.
We said a number, but we didn't commit.
Right, but from their perspective, you know, a match, and I think, I think 50,000 is a significant match.
And I think a match, which, a match, she seemed enlightened, or she seemed, it lifted up our conversation that we would offer money in good faith, that we're, and she needs to understand that we're desperate. You know, she seemed like, when you showed her pictures of the flooding, it seemed to me that she didn't know that the road flooded like that. And there have been pictures submitted in years. And, and there have been pictures submitted in, in years past, pictures that I took myself. So I don't know, but the next funding cycle, I mean, we, we could, we could get approved for this and it could be, and I'm just, I just paint the picture as it is, it could be another 10 years before we, we get another grant. I mean, and we have worked on this and worked on this since I've been on board, and this is the closest we've come to, to get funding for that. And it could be another long time before we get funding for the next phase.
You're, you're right. It's not a guarantee. It's not a guarantee. I think, I think we've, I think we made some headway there by having the meeting with her. We let her, we let her know the importance of the project and how it affects the citizens. So I, you know, I, I think that's, I think that, I think we impressed upon her that this, this project is needed and Carrabelle is willing to put up some matching funds to, to make it happen. But you're right, there is no guarantee that the next phase will come anytime soon. So that, and that's one reason why with this, this first phase, we, we identified the most critical part of that project that needs to be corrected.
And, and please rest assured, we all know, and even Mr. Keith is out, we all know that that Baywood roadway needs to be repaired. And, and I impressed upon them that, that when it's flooding, it's dangerous for emergency services, EMS, ambulances to get out there through that flooding, and it's dangerous for school buses to come out that way when it's, when it's over flooding like that. And we're getting ready to get big rains again this, this weekend. I know you're not looking forward to it, we're all aware of it. The City of Carrabelle does not have the funding to repair that road on its own. It's, it's unfortunate. And this is the, this is the route we have to take. Unless we're repairing potholes, generally everything we do, even when we pave just one block, it's funded through our local option gasoline tax money that comes from the state.
Well, I'm going to, as I normally do, I'm going to step into it. Because I really am convinced in my mind and my heart, and I know the urgency and the need for this project to be done, have known it for many years. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we leverage the full $100,000 to it. And the reason why I do that is because I don't want to stand a chance of losing the significant, significant part of the project as our engineer has described. Maybe that will draw the possibility of getting that significant part done. And folks that live in Baywood understand, we are struggling and trying to get that entire project done. But when we leverage this amount of money out of our budget that we really don't have, well, we do have that in there in our log account, as the mayor explained, but it very much limits what we have in the City of Carrabelle. There's not, not a large tax base here. So anyway, my motion is to go ahead and leverage the $100,000 toward the project.
All right.
Are you approving the resolution as it is?
If that's, yes.
That would be, okay, so you.
For Phase One?
I beg your pardon?
For Phase One?
Yeah, yes, so that would, so now we have a motion, so we need a second to really get in, and you're motioning to approve this resolution as it is?
I will. I'll, I'll, I'll do the motion again.
Okay.
To simplify. I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution 012024 as read and the leverage amount of $100,000 out of our log account.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, let's have some discussion.
So the, the resolution doesn't specify different phases, it says for the project. So when I read this, I assumed this $100,000 would be for the entire project, so I think we need to clarify that.
What does the application say? Are we applying for the whole project or are we only applying for Phase One?
Well, let, let Russell say what it is.
The application would be for Phase One.
Phase One. And is, is Ms. Show Walter, she understood that application is for Phase One?
Yes, and that, and that was her recommendation.
Okay, okay.
So Russell, the, the grant amount would be around 500,000 that we're requesting?
Yes, and I, I apologize, I don't have that exact number.
So would we be adding our 100 to that 500 and getting 600, or would we be paying 100 of that 500?
We'd be paying 100 of the five.
So the project's 500 and we would request whatever we need other than 100?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
It, it may, pardon me. It, it may, I mean, we need to update the cost estimate, so it's going to change and it's, it'll go up.
That's right.
Right.
So I guess, Commissioner, so when you're voting on this, you need to understand that exactly what Russell said, that when we say funding for Baywood Estates, that is, that equals Phase One?
Yes, Ms. Courtney.
I can, under that last whereas, where it says that we're committing funding of 100,000 for Baywood Estates, I can add in Phase One there if y'all would like.
I think we should specify.
Okay, Baywood Estates, project, comma, or semicolon, Phase One. Okay.
We're still in discussion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Russell, in the grant, grant application, you said if we leverage this 100,000, we're only going to request 400,000?
No, okay, let me clarify. Well, we need to adjust our, our cost estimate. That number is going to be what the total project costs. The city's leverage amount or their match amount would take $100,000 off of that amount. Did that answer your question?
It does. I was hoping we would just get the full amount and add the 100,000 to it.
And.
And get more work done.
And Ms. Ms. Show Walter, they did discuss this, having to just update the cost amount because the prices are increasing, just, we all know, even when we go to Home Depot and the Ace and the, and the Gander's Hardware, that prices are increasing weekly, daily. And she was aware that the cost, the estimate was going to have to be adjusted up some. So, I mean, we could even be looking at 600 for the total cost.
I, I think that is, I think that is possible. And, you know, the, the important thing is here is that we get the project funded. And, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to push the envelope too, too far, to the point that it doesn't get funded. And I think if we leave the limits as it has been submitted previously and update the cost estimate, I think, I think that's a reasonable way to submit the application.
And if I can, that falls right in line with my thinking process on, on the way I stated it with 500 and us adding 100 to it. Because I can remember some of the hurdles that we crossed with the Avenue B project running short.
Yes.
Because of increases.
True.
Same, same scenario.
Yeah, you're right.
And if we were able to get the 500,000 and our 100 went with it, of course, as you said, you'd do a cost increase. But anyway, you see my thought process on that.
I do, yeah.
And the mayor's, is what she's describing with cost increase. Thank you.
You're welcome. So this, most likely, we won't be able to submit for another DOT grant for Phase Two or to complete the project until this first phase is completed. They, they, you know, you've got to complete a project.
You have to close it out, yeah.
Yes, your project has to be closed out before you can submit for another grant. This is not going to happen if, overnight. It could take, it could take, I don't know, eight months to 12 months before ground is broke. And then we'll complete the project. And meanwhile, we're collecting more local option gasoline tax revenues. The higher the gas goes, the more gasoline tax we collect. Good and bad, so, but anyway.
We all contribute.
Yes, I know. We all do in this room. So we'll be collecting more gasoline tax. I think we collect somewhere around 80, 80 to 100,000 a year. So, you know, we'll have another little chunk when it comes time to submit an application again in a year and a half or so. So we can just, you know, work on that and maybe agree in principle here not to, not to dip into those funds unless it's an emergency, so we can save that for the next application. But sometimes we get emergencies and little small jobs. So we have, we're going to, we're going to just amend the, the resolution a little bit there under that last whereas, put a semicolon and then put Phase One. And we have the motion on the floor to approve the resolution as read and amended now, we'll say, and leverage the full 100,000. A motion by Commissioner Melander, seconded by Commissioner Gray. Do we have any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, then, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries, and good luck to us all.
Yes.
All right, let's move on to our judicial hearing. And I will call to order this quasi judicial hearing, and it's Item One, approve, disapprove the final site plan for RV, for the RV park at 1637 West Highway 98. And this is requested by Leonard Sparks. And we'll let Russell do some of the talking, and I'm assuming you're Mr. Sparks? Okay, nice to see you. Mr. Hartman, I mentioned earlier today, I have a disclosure, I don't know when I need to.
Actually, if, if anybody has any ex parte disclosures, that they had any ex parte communications on this project, now would be the time to disclose.
Okay, well, I will, I don't know if anyone else, or if anyone attended the meetings or anything, I'm not, not sure about that. But on December the 31st, I received a lengthy email from Mr. Sparks there, and nice to see you. And I did tell you in the email that I would have to disclose. And then his email detailed the ongoing challenges he and his wife have dealt with over the past several months, including issues with obtaining surveys, working with engineers, getting a P and Z quorum for ruling on rezoning a special exception, and delays in communications because of illnesses. And, and these are, there were several other items listed, but I won't go into detail. And he also attached the following three documents to the email. There was a six-page presentation titled Sparks RV Lot Project 1637, Highway 98 West Presentation. There was a one-page presentation titled Sparks RV Lot Project Narrative R1, and a one-page presentation titled Sparks 1638, Highway 98 West Utility Construction Plan. I really didn't look at those documents, actually, I didn't look at them until today when I went back to, excuse me, yesterday, when I, I wrote this disclosure to see how many pages they were, because I just didn't want to get myself involved in it too much more than I was already by reading the body of his email. But they appear to be somewhat pretty much the same as the documents that were presented in our agenda packet. And I responded to Mr. Sparks on December the 2nd, which also copied the city clerk and the city administrator and the city attorney. And I told him that this item that he had before the P and Z Board, followed by coming to the City Commission, is a quasi judicial item, and all rulings by the board members must be based only upon evidence presented to all board members at the same time during the public meetings, and this removes the presumption of prejudice by one board member or another. Therefore, I wrote to him that I cannot discuss this issue with you, Mr. Sparks or Mrs. Sparks, and I respectfully request that you, Mr. Sparks, please do not send me any further information regarding narratives, site plans, or anything related to this item. When the item does make it to the City Commission, before the vote, before we vote on this, I will have to disclose the communications and list, the list of attached documents that he emailed to me. So I'm disclosing that now. And then also, yesterday, on January the 3rd, I received an email from Ms. Sharon Glaze where she wrote, in quotation marks, "Another RV park? Next, I guess we will have a tent city." So I did not respond to that email from Ms. Glaze, but I just want you all to know, you know, that I received that comment, and I want all of the commissioners to receive that comment. So any member of the public may request copies of these communications through a public records request, and that's all I have to say. Okay, is that all right, Mr. Hartman?
That covers it.
All right, so we'll turn this over to Russell now and let him tell us about the project.
Okay, this project did go before the P and Z Board on December 21st. We, we did provide a comment letter based on the materials submitted to the city. We had 10 comments initially. The applicant responded to those comments, made a resumé of information, and of those initial 10 comments, two comments remained to be addressed. Our recommendation to the P and Z Board was approval with conditions of those two comments being satisfactorily addressed. The P and Z Board voted unanimously to approve the project and sent to the City Commission. So the, the two comments from our comment letter, which was updated late this afternoon, we received some information from the city utility staff late this afternoon, so we did amend comment number eight. I'll summarize it for you. Comment eight is, relates to the sewer service. There's an existing grinder station on the property. There was some question as to whether that had the adequate capacity. The applicant did provide specifications for that grinder station. The city staff went out this afternoon to review what was actually in the ground compared with the specification provided. And the city staff indicated that that was, there was only one pump in the grinder station, and the specification had a, a two-pump system, a duplex system. From our evaluation, the duplex station as submitted would be adequate. Mr. Painter agrees. So the amended comment states that the existing grinder station is a simplex, specification provided is a duplex system, it is acceptable to the city if the applicant removes the existing grinder or installs a grinder station that meets the specification provided in the application, and satisfactorily completes a startup test to be witnessed by the city. So if that occurs, that, that comment would be satisfactorily addressed. Everyone follow? Okay. And then the second comment is comment 10. The applicant submitted digital documents. Those documents have specific requirements by the Florida Administrative Code, code to be signed and sealed by a professional engineer. We're just asking for, for that requirement by the Florida Administrative Code to be met. From our perspective, I think both of these items can be addressed by the applicant. I did discuss the grinder station with the applicant prior to this meeting, and he's generally agreeing that he would provide a grinder station that meets those requirements.
That's correct.
So with, with that, our recommendation is for approval with, with those two conditions being met.
All right, do we have comments or questions?
Okay, I do have a question regarding number two, the, the comment number two, the comprehensive plan. And it says that this comment is not adequately, adequately addressed the stormwater calculations. So you need, they needed to provide some stormwater calculations for the 25-year, 24-hour storm.
So you need, they needed to provide some stormwater calculations for the 25-year, 24-hour storm event.
You know what, you're correct.
Okay.
You're correct, that is, that is also an outstanding comment. And I did speak with the applicant's engineer, um, I, I don't, I don't think that's gonna be an issue to be, to be-
Do those calculations?
To do those calculations, that's right.
Okay, I, I wouldn't think.
Okay.
But there, so there are three, there are three comments.
Thank you for correcting me.
Something was sent this afternoon, was that from Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's some information regarding-
The stormwater.
I, I have not had the opportunity to review that.
It, it just come in late, so I didn't get a chance to, to circulate it either, so.
Okay.
I think you were copied.
All right.
And then on the, on the sewer issue, Courtney and I did speak with, uh, Mr. Painter yesterday about this project. And, you know, basically, it seemed, it, it, Mr. Painter said, you know, if you, if you work with him and, and, and follow up, he'll, he'll work with you and, and make sure that you, you can get your hookups. If the project is, is approved today. Okay. Did you have anything to add to that, Courtney? Okay, because we, we talked to him together about that. Try to figure out which would be the best location for you to hook up to, to the main sewer. Okay. Do we have any, anything else? Any comments? And, and, and I'll just, uh, reiterate that you said that the P and Z, uh, voted to unanimously approve and recommend this project to the, to the city commission.
Yes.
With conditions.
These three conditions. Uh, and generally, uh, we, we depend on the P and Z to, um, uh, hear these, these presentations and study them. I think they probably met several times on, on this project. So, um, and we, we, 99% of the time, take their, their, uh, recommendation on these projects. Any comments? I see our officers left.
Just for vehicle unlock.
Oh, okay. Okay, but thank you all, I already thanked him for being here, and thank you for being here, Chief Hogan, as well. And that was Officer Reban that, that left. Excuse me. Thank you. All right, so what do we, what do we think we want to do here?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with those, uh, three, contingent upon those three, uh, items to be met.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Keisha, that's a motion to approve, uh, contingent on the three items, uh, to be met by Commissioner Melander, uh, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries unanimously. Okay, then, uh, the quasi judicial hearing is now adjourned. And we'll move on to our regular commission meeting, uh, which, uh, there is no new business, and there is no old business, and we'll probably pay for that next month. We'll probably have a three-hour meeting. So, uh, Happy New Year again, and, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.